Trenton City Council meeting Thursday, June the 6th, 5:30 PM. Let us call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Lest allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
An appropriate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, for the record, is excused from this meeting. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Presente.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Presente.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Cologie, Legislative Council, present. Thank you. And Assistant City Attorney Scott Micchio.
Present.
Thank you. And Madam President, if it's your wish, I will read the invocation.
Yes, thank you.
As soon as I can find it. See if I can do this off the top of my head. Almighty God, who holds... No, I cannot. Hold on one second for me. Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we humbly beseech thee to hold this, our deliberations... Excuse me. Hold this, our deliberations, and these thy... I am trying to remember this off the top of my heart. However, I cannot. I apologize, Madam President.
That's okay.
Lord, we thank you for the time and for the deliberations. We ask that you cover the council and the people, and that we will, in order... Thank you, amen.
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 Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on with the agenda. I understand we have presentations this evening for advising consent appointment of Masiel Medina-Ferrera. And that will be by Mr. Mayor Rego Ciura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I am here to seek your advice and consent on the appointment of our new Director of the Housing and Economic Development Department.
I'm gonna get the, um, I get the police reports. Uh huh. And body cam. I got the...
Our new HED Director, Masiel Medina-Ferrera. The selection of this new director was conducted in collaboration with the New Jersey, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. We reviewed over 20 resumes from highly qualified candidates, each bringing a wealth of experience and a vision for Trenton's future. After careful consideration, I appointed Masiel Medina-Ferrera, a licensed professional planner and public manager to this crucial role on March 20th, 2024, as the Acting Director. In her short time as Acting Director, Masiel has demonstrated exceptional leadership and initiative. She has conducted a thorough review of our staffing needs, assessed our demolition program, issued an RFP for the redevelopment of Enterprise Avenue. Additionally, she has reviewed our prior RFPs for Roebling Block 2 to begin the planning of a reissuance of a new RFP, and has begun the critical work of planning our proposed house auction in the coming months. Masiel is also proactively engaged with local business leaders, other stakeholders, ensuring their voices are heard and integrated into our plans. Ms. Ferrera's resume speaks volumes about her capabilities and achievements. She has a proven track record in managing multifaceted projects, directing large-scale infrastructure programs, and delivering effective supervision and service in fast-paced environments. Her core competencies include area planning and zoning, traffic transportation planning, grant management and writing skills, and urban redevelopment projects. Masiel has extensive experience working with various municipalities, where she has overseen development applications, conducted zoning analysis, and created planning reports. She has successfully managed park design and construction projects, supported HU D community development block grant applications, and coordinated streetscape design projects. In her previous roles, Masiel has directed department functions involving parks, community development, and housing. She has spearheaded capital projects, coordinated hazard mitigation planning, and managed open space trust funds, demonstrating her ability to drive significant improvements and foster community resilience. Masiel holds a master's degree in urban planning from NYU and a bachelor's degree in sociology from Boston College. She's a licensed professional planner and a... of an American Institute certified planners. Her professional affiliations include current membership in the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and several planning associations. I think Masiel will fit perfectly in the Trenton landscape. Her people approach of working together in collaboration is what the city needs to move us all forward. I respectfully ask you for her advice and consent for the appointment as Director of our HED Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do any council members have any questions at this time?
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
I very am a chance first. I have a few questions I'd like to ask.
Go ahead, thank you.
So, Mayor, one of the things I, having had a chance to get to know Ms. Ferrera since she's been working in our city the past few months, I'm very, very impressed with her knowledge, some of the conversations we've been able to have, and her being able to relate Trenton to some of her past experiences, and kind of hearing some of her rather expansive ideas, and I thought innovative ideas, and also some things there, I think, that we've needed to face as a city that we've been avoiding for a long time and taking ideas from other places. So, I'd like to know what impressed you most when you interviewed and spoke with her the first time?
I think her plan, experience, when you, when you talked to her, that was one of the things that we have fell behind in, in our planning, our redevelopment zones, and making sure that... I'll give you an example. For, for instance, the properties that JoJo's Steakhouse occupy are not in a redevelopment area. We've cleared that area, and it is too important just to put up for a city auction. And we'd like to have it as a area in need of rehabilitation. Masiel has spearheaded talking to a planner. The other part is our bandwidth at the zoning board to do all of that groundwork. Well, we're working with the consultant to write a report so the zoning board will be able to facilitate changing that into a rehabilitation zone so we then can work with the developer. So, I think it's her, um, um, her hands-on approach that she could problem solve based on her vast experience in planning, and I think that's gonna be really good. Some people want to look for a redeveloper, magic redeveloper, but I think that the planning aspect is so much more important to make sure that the groundwork is taken care of, and that, that was my sole consideration.
Okay. And then my second question is regarding making changes as we go forward into this, you know, further, or this decade of 2020s, to try to update what we need to do as far as redevelopment, economic development, bringing jobs in the city. How do you see Ms. Ferrera coming on board and maybe changing that approach? And what, what can we expect to see in the coming years?
I think unlike other directors, her ability to work with people and have that conversation, I've seen firsthand Masiel work with the Latino merchants, work with the African-American Chamber of Commerce, work with Greater Trenton, and facilitate the necessary conversations to get everybody on the same page. So, I think a people-oriented approach is so important. We know that Trenton, at the end of the day, is a small town with a big community, and there's many working parts and many stakeholders. Bringing all those stakeholders together is important, and it's the ability to have those conversations and communicate what's important for the City of Trenton, and to actually have a vision for where we want to take the city in years from now and, and further on.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam President. Um, so Mayor, you mentioned that Masiel has been making great connections within the community, and I think that's absolutely phenomenal, especially being proactive. One of the areas that I'm always concerned about is when we have new, new directors and staff coming on is the inter, inoff, inter, inner office. So, one of the things I just want to make sure that we do is that she has a plan in action where she actually has meetings with her immediate staff, so they're actually getting reviews, and they can get to know her, and she can get to know them. Communication is extremely important, and the more we communicate with each other, the stronger we are. So, I would just like to make sure that we emphasize that, that there is good communication so that our department stays stronger, that we have the three-month evaluation or however you do it, six-month, whatever that is, but that everybody in the office knows they're being heard, and they also get to have that one-on-one with her as well.
One of the good things in the partnership with DCA and our oversight, they actually sat down with every single employee in the HED department. Masiel was able to review that and then also independently speak with all staff members. So, she's able to look at the strengths and weaknesses of the department, how to expand the bandwidth, so to speak, and how to maximize everyone's potential, where the, where their strongest points are, where, where we need to get supplementary people on the ground.
Thank you, sir. I just want to make sure that our, if there may, if there are areas that might need assistance, like you said, there may be some that are strong, some that not so strong. So, as long as we are making sure that they have the assistance where they needed and support, actually, I think that's the better word. That's what I'm concerned right about right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Should we introduce Masiel?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Masiel Medina-Ferrera, Acting Director of HED. Good evening. Would you like me to give an overview of my experience? And, or would you just prefer to ask questions? Let me know how you would like to.
So, the mayor has introduced you to us, right? And pretty much given us an overview of who you are. From my perspective, if you wouldn't mind, tell us, from your experience in coming in here, key areas within your unit that need the most attention and how you would plan to tackle, right? So, if you were to tell us three things that you see are, they need immediate attention or fix, what those three things are, and if there's a plan, what's your plan to address that? And then we'll open it up. If council has questions for her, then we'll go ahead and you'll ask the questions. Thank you.
Well, first things first, as the mayor may have provided some introductions on, is the staffing capacity. That has become very apparent in terms of whether it be residents, the boards, planning, zoning, landmarks, and at some point probably the rent stabilization board as well. That is, is something that I am very, very focused on. We have critical positions within the department that need to be filled. Those have become my high priority. I've been working with the administration and our personnel department to have that, those positions filled as soon as possible. And when I'm speaking, I'm speaking to having a full planning staff as well as a zoning officer, some very critical code inspection for our housing and commercial units. So, that, that is, for the, I want to say from the minute I hit the ground, has been a very high priority. Also, as the mayor mentioned, we wanted to make sure that our redevelopment plans that either are currently in place, are working accurately, and working with our development community to making sure that those plans are being effectuated as we adopted them. And those that are not being done, we reevaluate them. And if we have to sunset them and then start the process again. I, I, I'm a planner by training, but I also believe that, you know, planning, plans that sat on the shelf for five years, 10 years, just really always need to be reevaluated and reassessed to make sure that it actually is addressing the current situation and environment on the ground. And the third thing, and I'm speaking to Councilwoman Frisbee's recommendation, I have spent a lot of time trying to assess my current staff and the things they need in terms of making sure that they have the appropriate licensing, the appropriate training, making sure that they are aware of the new land development regulations and things like that that affect their day-to-day jobs, making sure that every, that our employees in housing and inspections have the appropriate licensing to be able to do the job. We, we are now embarking on lead testing, so we made sure that our inspectors are certified for that. So, a lot of my initial work in the last three months is to, just to make sure that our staffing capacity has been addressed, our current redevelopment plans, start that process of reassessing those, and then making sure that our current staff is accurately trained and licensed.
Any other council people have any questions for Ms. Ferrera?
I have one question, Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Good evening, Director. Just a quick question. As far, I heard him mention the auction, the auction list that you're creating. How do we plan to advertise that or let the public know how that's gonna be done?
So, the council has already approved two third-party auction firms to participate and prepare that auction list. So, once that auction list is determined, fully vetted, the properties are secure. You know, we, we've had incidents where we've had properties on an auction list. We had to pull them back because we actually found that they're being occupied, and we had to take care of those, you know, bring in our other departments to make sure those people can be relocated safely. With that being said, once that's done, and we have that solid list, and we feel comfortable doing that, we will have an email distribution blast. We will have paper, where necessary, mailings to the list that we currently have. We will obviously work with Paul Harris and our Communications Department, making sure it's notified on the city website, plus the Housing Authority, any other, I would say, entity, partners that we deal with on homeownership and new homeowners that may be interested, let them know this is where, this is the time and place that the auction's gonna happen, and this is where they can find the listing and how to participate. So, I welcome your feedback on, you know, I think even prior, before we even actually do the auction, I'll probably prepare kind of a communication list and say, this is the, you know, the, the websites that we're gonna be posting, the targeted groups, stakeholder groups, and for everybody to review. If there's, you know, I'm new to the city, I welcome your feedback so that if you can, you know, give us any recommendations, we will make sure that, you know, we do our best effort to make sure everyone's notified.
Thank you. First, I should have started out with saying thank you, because I know you kind of hit the ground running since you've been here, so thank you for your work that you have been doing lately. But another question with, so it's not really a question. I guess something to think about, and I don't know if it's something that we can all do, if it's, you know, legalities, because we've been kind of going back and forth about it, but the LLCs that continue to buy up our property and not take care of the tenants, number one, or the houses, and so, you know, just trying to combat that challenge that we face here in the city, because we have a lot of these LLCs that continue to purchase properties, but they're not taking care of, they have tons of fines and summons, as you and I have discussed before about, you know, just taking care of their property and making sure that our tenants are living in something that is decent. And so, thank you.
Well, it is difficult because, you know, the LLC and the corporation is something that's kind of pretty much handed to us by the state, you know, how that is done. But in that environment, I have been working with staff, and particularly the Housing Division, that when, and, and inspections, when they come in for permits, that we make sure we get a point, a physical point of contact. And I think my other fellow directors are kind of doing the same thing whenever there's something that they can touch and kind of get real, you know, actual, physical contact from anyone that's trying to do business with the city, because I think that's where we get the opportunity to really be able to ask them for that information. When they come in for permits, approvals, or whatever it may be, that's where we can get and start to clean that up. And I, I welcome your feedback, because I know LLC is, you know, I don't, I, I'm a, I'm a big believer. I don't want slum lords, I don't want absentee landlords. I want people really focus on the city and its health and its redevelopment, and we really don't want those, we don't, those, those type of individuals, and LLCs are not our partners in that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. I'm coming to y'all. I'm glad to hear that because that was a major concern. We kept seeing different things coming and were asking, but at one time we were told that they couldn't, they could just come in under the name of the LLC and never give us anyone. And so, as we were looking at different problems and things happening, the questions were being asked before you got here. So, I am so glad that you are going to be looking into that so that we can know what's going on and be able to touch these people and not deal with them, especially from the standpoint of an LLC having property and something going wrong with it, and then a partner or owner in the LLC on the document under the separate name. We want to be able to make the correlation so that we can be able to flag and see what's going on. So, thank you for that. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So, I just want to first thank you very much for all the work you've done so far for our city. But also, I do want to echo what both of my colleagues just mentioned about LLCs. It's a massive problem in the city. It's something, soon as we came into office, all of us, before we even took office, and certainly afterward, many of our fellow citizens are extremely concerned with these LLCs to the point of when they even purchase properties at auction, they sit on them. So, I know there's been talk about having stronger sunset provisions. I hope that goes forward. But also the issue of if a property is to move to auction, that a Trentonian living next door is a property owner, has a right to purchase first. And that is something that I really would like to see our city move towards to at least give people a fair chance to have a property if they so desire. I do have some questions. So, I was really glad to hear that you're gonna be getting running on hiring a full planning staff and zoning officers, and hopefully more inspectors with that, because that has been a big complaint, and it's something we have to be very mindful of because it's hard enough when we have planning, zoning, and landmarks, and they don't have enough folks for a quorum. But when we don't have a planning staff to be able to develop the planning and the zoning packets to get to them and keep the city moving forward, you know, that's just like shooting ourselves in the feet. So, with that, do you have a guesstimate of how long it might take to replace? Like Ray Bukie retired. We also have other inspectors and other officers who are added age. They're doing good work, but we have so much work for them. We really need to have a farm team to be able to replace them and hopefully have some folks to be able to supplement them so then we can have quality, not just quantity. And I was wondering, what's the plan for that?
So, immediately, we have a transportation planner that will be starting with us shortly, as well as we have a candidate that I'm going to put forward for the zoning officer position. So, those two positions are in the works, if not going to hopefully be filled either within the month of June or sometime in the early July. The, the other thing that I'm doing is I'm reposting in multiple websites for other additional planning positions, just, you know, outside of the typical Starledge or whatever, just so that, I know when I filled my, when I responded to the posting, it was, it described Trenton and its challenges, and it brought me in, and I think I need to take that same approach with other planners because a typical posting doesn't really describe the opportunities for an up-and-coming planner or a seasoned planner to see Trenton as a great place to work. So, some of those old job postings, I'm revamping them, and I'm going to post out in other, posted with the University, Rutgers School, the Blasting School of Planning, and all our other local mercer, community college. So, that's, I try to take a more proactive and outreach approach to trying to fill those critical positions with very qualified candidates. In the interim, I have asked our current board consultants, our planning consultant, our two engineering consultants, as well as our land use attorney, to assist us a little bit more hands-on with the board applications as we fill those positions and making sure that the, the board functions without further delay. And then also, you know, making sure that, one of the things that I have been working with the staff is to readdress, to address all that backlog that we had, things that kind of just didn't have, were submitted, but to this point, because of the lack of the planning staff and, and zoning, we weren't able to get to. So, that's a, that's a big focus, trying to make those things, finish those reviews and get them on the planning board, zoning board, and landmarks docket. And Scott's here. I'm also working with Scott to make sure our landmarks board is also having, make sure their, their ordinance is up to date with DCA, I'm sorry, with the State Historic Ship Office, as well as making sure our membership is, you know, well-established, because we do have some vacancies. And I've, I've asked the clerk's office to give me information on the board membership and their terms and any training that they may or may not have had for the planning and the zoning board. So, board composition is very important. I am working on that, even though we, we are still, you know, working on trying to increase our staffing capacity. I haven't forgotten about the boards. I want them to be able to function as much as, as best as they can until we are at full capacity.
Okay. That's really great to hear. Thank you, because for many years, people weren't getting trained. I know when I first came on zoning in 2008, I had to do a full-day training in Boarding Town, I believe, is even for two days. People from other, our whole state came to it. So, it's extremely important that we reestablish that. And even, I would love to see our city host a training. So, hopefully, that's something we can also do at some point. So, there's a really, that's a lot of good information. I also have a question regarding, and this might be more with Law Department stat chip, but removing board members for non-attendance. That's been historically a big problem that we haven't faced. I don't know that we have an exact, you know, bylaws or a process for that, but that would be something that we really need to make sure that we handle pretty soon because unfortunately, even though this council's been great on filling zoning board positions and alternate positions, apparently, the past several months, we've had issues with zoning forums. And in the past, the other boards have had that too. So, it would be great if we can kind of put an end to that very soon.
Yeah. Wanna, with, in reviewing of, did ask for term limits and the board professionals for their attendance records as well. And those will be evaluated as part of a kind of, pretty much a recommendation by board to the administration and finally to council to, you know, if they're, if they have no longer, if they haven't attended meetings and have no real interest, we'll reach out to them and give them an opportunity to express if they want to renew attending meetings and participating. But if they don't, that's okay. But we need, as a, as a city, we need to move forward, and we gotta, we have to make sure our boards are, have appointed members.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Frisbee, and then Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Council President. So, one, I want to, one, thank you for what you have done so far already in the city. And I do want to thank Councilwoman Gonzalez for asking the question about the LLC. That is something that we've been knocking the doors down with, driving our Chief of Staff, Beech, and BA Cruz nuts with over the last few months about how do we get better control on that, not having names and letting people be able to change names has been a big thorn. People have been coming into the city and changing a name just so they can get in and buy land and still not do what they're supposed to do with our current constituents. So, thank you for addressing that. I do, I do want to thank you also for addressing my question, but I think that I heard you say that you've been, you've assessed your staff, and you've made sure they have the tools that they need in order to make sure they can get their job done. My question is, have you had a one-on-one with them? That's the important part. That's the important part, is, because it's one thing to come in and, you know, you assess, you see what, where the voids are, but talking to them, not so much in group, but individually, because you'll, you'll get more out of people when you talk to them one-on-one. So that is my question. Have you had the one-on-one? And if yes, then fantastic. If you have not, is that something that you plan on doing with your staff?
I have had one-on-one, and I also am in the process of setting bi-weekly meetings by unit. You know, right now, the way the department is set up, we have a planning unit, we have a real estate unit, we have housing inspections, we have an economic development where UEZ falls into that as well, and we have a commercial buildings inspection unit. So I try, I'm trying my best to make sure that I meet with all those individual units, the supervisors is in those units, on a two-week basis, just them, so that we can discuss their specifics. In terms of meeting with the staff one-on-one, I'm very hands-on. I have met with them on a particular project. I've also asked them to give me a list of what they're working on, to making sure that no one particular staff member is overworked or overloaded. I am part of, and a lot of this is because I'm worried, you know, I worry about the backlog and how we can address it, and if I have to reassign things, I need to understand that from the perspective of the staffer. You know, you know, what are, what is, what's either hindering their performance or their inability to get to a particular workload, whether it be the zoning permit reviews or whatever it may be, how can I do, what can we do in the short term, in the short term, until we get additional staff? So I, I have kind of a, you know, an interim plan to assist staff to get us where we, where we need to be and get rid of any sort of backlog, make sure the boards are running smoothly, as well as, you know, letting them know that whatever they need from me to get them, to equip them. You know, one of the things that we're going to do, we received a grant from DDRPC, the Delaware Valley Planning Commission, to buy new tablets, new computers, and other field software. So I reached out to all the supervisors once again, do, you know, speak to your staff, tell me what you need. Housing, let us know that all their tablets are out of date. So I have a very, you know, one-on-one, pretty much almost every day with either one of the supervisors, as well as now I'm going to be meeting with the units specifically so they can let me know what's, 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 what's their concerns and things that I can do. And the other thing is, I have been hands-on on all the potential vacancies that we have and in the interviewing process. I have my supervisors, I'm in those interviews with them, so I don't delegate that. I always make sure that I'm with them so that we can decide on a qualified candidate together.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Maciel.
Good evening.
Thank you. This resume is impressive, and I have had the pleasure of having a conversation with you, and I love some of your vision and ideas that you have for the department. And in that conversation, we talked about accessibility to city-owned properties for Trenton residents. And I know there may not be a way to strictly have something specifically for that, because it has to be open and fair. But I want to know, because there are a lot of residents that are reaching out to say there's no list, they cannot obtain a list of city-owned properties to shop from, to see if they can get their hands on something and renovate them and live there. So we have a high number of renters in the city, and as we know, with inflation, we're being outpriced of our community, so it's even more pertinent now than ever for us to help our residents achieve homeownership. So I want to definitely encourage opportunities for current residents, if there's some type of way. And I would love to know as council members, as legislators, what can, if there's anything that we can do, anything that we can adopt, maybe that the state has, or some other municipality is doing, and adopt that here to create opportunities for Trenton residents? Because the auctions are not working for our residents, we're being priced out by people outside of our communities that ends up being slum lords, or ends up not doing anything with the properties that they purchased, because honestly speaking, they're using them as tax write-offs and things like that. So, and that's a hindrance to our community, and it's driving down property values, it's driving down our neighborhood. So I would like to ask you, what can we do as council members to support, and what is your vision or thought process for that?
So one of the things that I've mentioned to the mayor and Mr. Cruz and Mr. Beech, is that what I realize, what I'd like to try to develop through the department, and obviously with the administration's support and then council's support, is a minority-owned, women-owned business initiative, where what we're finding is that we've got well-attention residents, but they are ill-equipped right now with lack of training and business know-how on, you know, how to do business, how to get themselves fully licensed, things like that. And I have spoken to Greater Trenton and see if we can start working on a training program. There's other, you know, high-profile developers that are interested in that as well, because they do want to be able to hire contractors that live in and work in the city. It's just, we don't have a mechanism, and unfortunately, I've had this experience, particularly with Hudson County, where it was very necessary, and we started kind of very, at the basic level, actions to small business owners, women-owned business owners, minority-owned business owners, and Hudson County residents, to just how to do business with the city, how to do business with the county. And, and, because that was easy for us to do, and then we expanded those training programs and that network to address how to do business with large companies. You know, we have a, we have a great, you know, we have two good, very well-established health industries here in the city, how we can have individuals, small business owners have contracts with those. We have the state offices here, how they can do, how can they participate in the state procurement process? So that, I think, is something that we can definitely work on, and I will definitely reach out to all of you, because for those of you who are at large, as well as those of you who represent the boards, it would be good for, it would be good for us to let us know what we should target, what do you see? On that. But I think that's very important, because I think that, that way, when the auction list comes out, and, you know, we will, and I'm going to answer, the auction list, at least we have started to prepare our residents to be able to engage in the auction list, because they have been trained, they have received their license, they know what to do. In my past experience, sometimes even having, helping individuals improve their credit rating, something as, you know, starting with just that. Some individuals just don't have the, they, they don't have the credit rating to be able to get the lending that they need. So that is something that, you know, we can definitely work on, and I would seek partnerships with our nonprofit agencies, Greater Trenton and other chambers, to give us feedback on that. In terms of the auction list and notifying residents, I will work with the third-party team to, the third-party auction firms, to make sure that we've included, like I said previously, I will kind of put together a communications list to make sure that we have, we've covered everything. And I've also asked the staff to prepare kind of a summary, just a brief summary of the past auctions and lessons learned. Because I would like to, what I would like to see in the foreseeable future is that us to move on to online auction and ongoing auction. So whenever a property becomes available, we just put it on to, but that is something, that's a more of a long-term focus. Like, I wouldn't estimate that I could probably get, have the department ready to be able to engage in that in this year, and that might have to be something that we can work on to going into 2025. But that, I think, would like, because that would make us kind of handle auctions like other cities do.
I love that you said you want to include the residents, because that was my next point, is a lot of people, we haven't had an auction in a while, but we do have redevelopment zones that don't require an auction. So putting in an offer for that, filling out the application and things like that, some of that is intimidating, and I love that you touched on the point of educating and training and certifying people for these auctions, but also doing that for the ones that they could put a direct offer in as well. Some people don't know what that process is, not even that they're intimidated by it, but they just don't know, and it's hard to get any information. You know, the department has been understaffed, so it's understandable, so I'm glad you're here. But I want to say, you know, maybe doing some public forums, some mailers to the residents directly, so that they're getting first dibs in a way of, you know, so there's not so much outside competition. And maybe that's a loophole that we can do, some outreach, just to say, you know, like you said, how do you do business with the city? How can I purchase a city-owned property? And then just lay that out for them, coming down to HED, fill out the application, here's what a city-owned property is, this is the process. And then working with them through that, whether it would be referrals for credit improvement, referrals for funding for renovations too, or those types of mortgages, like the home style loans or the 203K renovation loans. People don't really know about that information, it's not public, and if you don't know it exists, you don't know where to look. So I would love for us to be more informative, so that our residents feel like they have access. But lastly, I want to touch on, there was a cannabis business who had an employee incentive program, that if they worked there for X amount of years, they got something for housing and something to buy a car. I was wondering if it's possible, if it's legal for us to do or have an employee incentive housing program to access city-owned properties? We need, or we do have a residency requirement here, and sometimes there's too much competition in the private market. So is there a way to provide or create a program that would give accessibility to employees to purchase city-owned properties and work with them to build them up and move in there? And they have to live there for a certain amount of time or whatever? And that would be an incentive, we do have, you know, some turnover, we do have issues, homelessness and things like that, and that would be one less thing that they would have to worry about, something that everyone needs help with. So I was wondering if that's possible?
That's a great suggestion, and I will look into that. Whatever, I, I'm, I'm a big believer of, and I'm, and I'm open to anything that we can do to get, get our residents in the business of owning their own homes, trying to make, you know, trying to move renters into homeownership, especially any of our, our, you know, we have a vacancy problem here, and I'd want that effort to include city residents to help us with combating vacancy and blight in the city. So whatever programs we can do, I mean, there are some current programs that we wouldn't have to re-event the wheel, that are offered by HMFA and other state agencies, like first-time homeowners. In terms of communication, we can definitely try to do a more conservative effort, maybe by ward or by section, to have very informal groups, get members, representatives from those state programs to come in, you know, and we'll try to make it like after-hours. I also, with working on kind of more of the open space side and trying to get nonprofits involved in park grant, park participation and things that they, they wanted to do, I would have, I, we, the, the staff would prepare online, kind of almost like a Zoom meeting during the day for those individuals that can't come at nighttime. So whatever we can do in terms of try to get the information out, engage with residents, you know, we have different means of communication, we'll, we'll make sure to employ them.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Harrison?
I'll be sure, sweet. I'll enjoy what you were saying about the backlog. Majority of the directors have come up for the housing economic development, never really ever talked about the backlog. And you talked about how you want to help build up your staff and your passion for the city and how you see a vision. I really think that we've been looking for a long time for somebody to sit in that position that you're in, and I think the mayor actually finally found one that's, that's going to go beyond all our expectations. So thank you for coming to our great city.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
I just have one last thing to ask. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, in Newark, they had the program where they talked to Section 8 about using the vouchers towards ownership or something like that? So if that's something that we could look into as well, to see if we could do that here in the city of Trenton, because we do have quite a number of people that are on Section 8 and get the certificates or the vouchers, if they could use that, if we could bring that program here to allow them to use that towards purchasing of a home, then that's helping them with, with some of that equity, right, and giving them a foot in the door? Because as my colleagues have said, we want people to have homeownership and not be subject to landlords, and unfortunately, we have some that are just not good landlords, and we need to fix and deal with them as well, but we also want to be a blessing to the people too. So if we could look into that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. I understand that this time, as a previous practice, it was the request of the mayor that a vote be taken.
Yes.
Immediately after.
No.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll read the title of the resolution. Resolution 24-12, Resolution consenting to the appointment of Maciel Medina Ferreira as Director for the Housing and Economic Development Department for the City of Trenton. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Yes, absolutely.
Second?
Thank you.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman, thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes, congratulations, Director Ferreira.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Madam President, moving on with the agenda at this time, we have public comment?
Yes.
If I could have the public comment clipboard, please. Thank you, Mr. Beech. And Madam President, we have five individuals listed for public comment. The first one is Letitia Peters. And so the public, public comment is five minutes long. You may address any item that you wish. Please understand the council is not obligated to respond to you. Please do state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Yes. Letitia Peters, 1462 Stuyvesant Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, 08618. Madam President and Trenton City Council members. It is my pleasure this evening to address you. Over the years, there has been lack of accountability in Trenton, New Jersey, which is jeopardizing the health, welfare, or safety of the citizens, or degrading the quality of life. And I would like to see a change in the city of Trenton now, for the better. I have personally experienced unaccountability by Trenton city employees, Trentonians, landlords, renters, and even a police department. And this needs to be changed now. Have the city council determine a date for a meeting with the landlords? The renters are not properly following protocol for trash and recycling and/or practicing sanitary standards. People have a right to and should be insured of environment free from excessive sound. All these cities have a noise or sensitive ordinance, and I would like to propose that Trenton do so. Even as Jersey City established a Quality of Life Task Force to fix neighborhood complaints of animal abuse, tenant landlord conflicts, and business infractions that impact residents. Since I addressed the city council in March, there was a serious accident, just a couple of houses in, in May. Many Trentonians have expressed the serious speedings, and we have been told that the police have not have training, do not have the updated dates. do not have the updated speed traps, or no money was allocated for this. There will be a budget meeting in July. When will the budget be published? And I would like to include speed traps and training of the police officials with speed trapping. And I would also like to include that Trenton libraries become a part of Mercer County Library System and the cleaning of the schools from mold and rodents and any issue that would improve the quality of life of Trentonians and everyone who lives in Trenton. Thank you for your time.
Monroe Lamore. One more time, Monroe, oh, there we go.
My name is Monroe Lamore. I live at 260 North Willow Street. We take care of our building. Now it is done very, very well. It's a beautiful place. And we don't have a problem with trash and recycling. Everything is clean. I came to speak about my grand niece who was living in the park. She's homeless. And this is the second time I've come to ask her to be here so I can try to see if we can get a place for her to stay. But sometime people just too complacent or whatever you might say. So anyway, as far as our city goes, you have over there by the railroad tracks, a lot of trash that needs to be cleaned up right here next to City Hall. So we need to make sure that we keep our city clean. I have gone over to Henry Austin Clinic, cleaned up trash over there, weeds. Somebody in the park come over and help me. And I've done other cleaning and asked people in Public Works to come and clean up over there on the street where I live. Complained about a month about trash and empty lot, I believe, the city-owned. So we really need to take care of our city. It's the best city in the world. I love it, and that's all I got to say.
Regina Thompson Jenkins.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for your professionalism and doing the work of the people for the city. It is amazing to see. I come on to you on behalf of my son Trey Lane and the honorary naming of a street on Kirkbride. My family, my grandparents moved there 60 years ago. I still own the house. It took me 10 years to go back to that street because that's where my son was shot down. I don't know if I can do what Trey did. He sacrificed his life. I don't know if I could did that, jumped in front of some bullets to save other people. But I try my best to serve, pay it forward to others. What I do is, it was bigger than Trey. So I'm out here changing policies, not only on the city level, the state level, but on the federal level. Tomorrow, I'll be in DC with 3,000 other people around the country doing this work for every town with gun violence. That is my mission. Because if I couldn't save my son, I can save somebody else's son or daughter. And that's what I want to do in his honor. For me, going back to Kirkbride and New Willow is tarnishing. It represented everything that was bad. The bullet holes are still in the door. So if I can change that for hope, then I'm doing something right. Because those bullet holes represent everything that took away, took away my pride and joy. And when I go back to Kirkbride, I could see hope again. For 10 years, I could not walk on that street. It was very, my husband would go all the way around the country, all the way around the city to get me where I need to be. And I just thought, you know, this is 12 years in the making for me. But it wasn't the time of the last council. This is the time. The professionalism, the dedication that you all had to this city. I'm invested in the city. I've been here all my life. I own several properties in the city. This is where it needs to happen. This time is now. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I cannot read this writing. I'm going to say there's a John here. I see initials J. I got you, man. Thank you. Carolyn Brooks, thank you.
Good evening. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me for, I'm a city employee of 21 years. I live at 249 Hillcrest. I'm here to ask that my workers' comp money be released. I've been waiting over a year for the settlements finalized. It's just waiting for a final approval. And it's been dragging out for a year. According to my lawyer, there are several other cases that fit the same category. And that's why I'm here today. So thank you.
Madam President, those are all the individuals I have listed for public comment at this time. If it's your will, you may go start with any member for civic comment.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Harrison.
First, I would like to start with congratulations tonight on the new director. I know you're going to do a wonderful job. I like to see the wonderful news that Maria Richardson's doing with all our wonderful parks. Our city's looking wonderful. Like to thank the, but he's not in the room right now, the police director. His staff came out over the weekend regarding a community outrage with loud music, a party that went on for hours and hours and hours. So I was grateful that the police department came out there and grateful that the community is reaching out to us up here on this council and the police department and identifying houses that are becoming a problem, also known as party houses. Because if it's during the middle of the day, I don't think people, you know, it would be concerned. What if it gets later in the day? You have people who have, you know, have to get up for a second job or they have children or they're elderly, they would like to sleep, be dealing with that music all night. So I like to see us continually where this council's working together, which is great. Our directors are working hard, mayor's working hard, DCA is partnering with us. It's great to see the community always coming out and giving their input. So let's, let's keep moving Team Trenton forward every day. Thank you. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone who came up and spoke. And congratulations to Director Masiel. Welcome officially on board. Just a quick, quick shout out. Huge thank you to Regina. Regina, I know that you turned your pain into purpose. And we've all witnessed you take that tragedy and you've taken it, like you said, to the national level, to the federal level, and you're fighting every single day. And I praise you for all the strength that you have. You raise a fine young man, and you know how I felt about him. And so I just want to say thank you for you continuing to do what you do and continue to have the strength that you have. Whatever we can do to support, you know, we're always here for you. And I'm, I know I speak for everyone on this council because we've all been there with you for a long time, fighting the fight. So thank you. Just not too much to really speak on today. Just a couple of announcements. We do have, we're ending the year, so shout out to everyone with the proms that have happened, the proms that are going to happen, to all of our students who are getting awards next week from Trent Central High School and the scholarships that they're getting. Just salute to all of the kids. Just a couple of announcements. We're kicking off the 609 Day Activities. And tomorrow, I'll be doing my one with the law enforcement officers and our students. I'm also the 21st partnering with Councilwoman Frisbee as we do our Differently Aabled Event Day. And then also partnering with Councilwoman Harrison as we do a giveaway in East Trenton. So just make sure you come out. That's June 22 on Euclid Avenue. So please come on out if you are able to do so. I think that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. First, I want to wish congratulations to our newest director, Masiel Medina Ferreira. Welcome and thank you. We look forward to working with you and having you help move the city forward even more. I think we have a really great team of directors right now. And our mayor's put assembled a really awesome team. And I am grateful for the staff that we now have here. I thank everybody who came up tonight. I do want to address Regina and John. I'm here with you. You know, we've been in the fight together with gun violence prevention, for, at least for me, for just over eight years. I know you've been doing it longer with Trey. I'm like you, I don't know if I could have done that, the ultimate sacrifice of giving my life for others. So I commend you for raising such a phenomenal young man that he would actually put his life on the line for doing that. And it takes a lot of strength to do that. And your timing is always important. So we're grateful for this time that you have the strength now to go. And John, for being her strength that she can lean on. You guys have been doing great work. And John, I know you're a quiet storm, but I know you are a storm. So thank you for the work that you have been doing. Ms. Carolyn, she left, so I'll have to address that another time. I'm going to go into our announcements this Saturday. There will be a Wear Orange in the Park. That is with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We are partnering with the city and so many others that is, we've been doing this for over eight years since I've been a part of Moms. And it's for those families who have been impacted by gun violence. So we ask everyone who knows someone or view or that someone to please come out, show support for those who have been impacted by gun violence. We're going to be marching on West State Street 2, Catwalter Park. I believe it's going to start at Calhoun Street. If not, we're going to be right in that vicinity. And that's at 9:00 AM. And we will have a program beginning at 10:00 AM once we get to Catwalter Park. A lot of vendors. It will be very family-friendly. So we hope that you will come out. As Councilwoman Gonzalez did say, I, we are partnering together on Differently Aabled Day with that 609 Day. That is going to be again, June 21. And that is going to be at the Capital Area YMCA from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Those of you who are differently abled, please come out if you know someone or you want to support. Your presence is always welcome. Remind everybody about Friday, June 14. It's June 10. And that's going to be at, here at the City Hall, 319 East State Street. We're going to have the flag raising at 3:00 PM and celebration at 4:00 PM. Have our Pride celebration as well here at City Hall. Actually, it's going to be downtown Trenton and South Warren in Lafayette at 2:00 PM. And that's on June 22. That is our Pride. And then there is a Special Needs Resource Fair that's going to be happening on Friday, June 28 from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at Riverside Pediatric Medical Center, 325 Jersey Street here in the city of Trenton. They asked for your RSVP. There is a flyer here if anyone cares to see it. And finally, I want to make mention of, on Friday, June 14, Smith Family Foundation is inviting everyone out. They're having their graduation ceremony for their students who have worked hard, have earned their degrees and they are graduated from college. We'd love to have you come out and support. That's going to be 6:00 PM at 471 Parkway Avenue. And that's at the Smith Family Foundation or Calvary Pentecostal Church, whichever address you want to use, it's all the same. But that's at 6:00 PM on next Friday at 6:00 PM, 471 Parkway Avenue. With that, I want to close out with the portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. And also Regina, I'll be joining you down in DC. I have been invited to speak on one of the panels, panels. So I enjoy being in the fight with you. Have a good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to start off by saying congratulations to Ms. Masiel Ferreira for her appointment to the Housing and Economic Development Department. God knows, we definitely need the leadership and we need the work to be done and to turn this city around in a positive way. We need a lot of work on economic development and housing. I look forward to going to the Wear Orange this Saturday and participating in the march and the rally. Gun violence prevention and gun sense is near and dear to my heart since that march in 2012. And that year was such a horrific, horrific year that changed a lot of our lives. And Aunt Regina, you know, I miss Trey dearly, my godbrother. And I keep him alive in the work that I do. And I appreciate you and I admire your strength and your sacrifice of all of your time. You go around this country and you advocate for mothers who can't even speak for themselves because they don't have the strength. So I pray for your continued strength, both of you, to do what you do. On a lighter note, the Young Professionals Network of New Jersey, the Mercer Trenton Chapter, is hosting their first Pathways to Homeownership Workshop. It is a prelude panel discussion followed by a three-room breakout session in various classrooms at the Mercer County Campus Downtown at Kearney Hall from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on July 18. For those that are interested, this would be an event that will walk you through from the basic personal finance to funding opportunities for financing for home purchases and resources for homeowners to talk about how you can access funding and how to renovate your home and how to, you know, file your taxes, how to keep up with your property and build equity and things like that so that you are tapping into wealth and building wealth in the community and for your families. So we want to invite you out. The email address to RSVP is ypnmercer@gmail.com. And you can reach out to me on any various platform as well. And in ending with, I look forward to saying yes when that resolution comes to rename the street to Trey's name in the honorary street naming. And I consider that a privilege and an honor. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you to everybody for being here tonight. Congratulations to our new H E D Director, Masiel Ferreira. Thank you. We look forward to seeing great things from you. And we appreciate the things that you have done already. June is Pride Month. And so to all of our friends and family, to our allies, the LGBTQIA+ community, we celebrate you this month. It is also Gun Violence Awareness Month. And so we acknowledge that gun violence is not right. And we commend those that do the work to constantly bring the message and the mission forward. With that being said, Regina, John, it will be a pleasure to be able to vote on the street renaming for Trey tonight. And thank you for your advocacy and the work that you do. We share a very special relationship. And so I consider it my honor to sit in this seat at this time to bring this forward. I would like to congratulate Councilwoman Jennifer Williams in her absence. She's being honored by the Women's Political Caucus of New Jersey PAC with the Trailblazer Award on June 17 at the 2024 Women of Achievement Reception that's happening at Cooper's River View from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And this is given to, in recognition of leadership, civic involvement, and professional efforts that have helped make New Jersey a better place for women. So congratulations to Councilwoman Williams in her absence. I'm thrilled tonight that we have two resolutions coming forward. 24-237, a resolution endorsing Bill D. 3240, which would allow voters who are 16 and 17 to vote in New Jersey's school board elections. I'm hopeful that we would go ahead and move that forward, that we would... forward, that we would support that state effort to engage our youth, that if it can be done at some appointed time, that it would follow through right here. It would be done, but in support of it nonetheless. And then we have Resolution 24-238, which is the resolution endorsing the state legislation mandating the state agencies about the documents and websites in the multilingual format. Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for putting forth the resolution of support of the state legislation. It was my pleasure to work with you, as we now added translate to Spanish, Polish, Liberian, French Creole, and Haitian languages as to the documents in the website. It is important that we are inclusive of everyone, and while the intention and efforts were there, to make sure that we are, I am excited that tonight, hopefully, this will pass and that we will be able to move forward in that effort in helping to bring forth proper translative services for those in need in the city. Again, thank you to everyone for coming out. We appreciate your time. Have a wonderful night, a great weekend, and take care. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. Moving on with the agenda and docket at this time, if you'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes, we have minutes of March 19 and recently circulated minutes of March 21.
May I have approval of the minutes as so named?
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
If you could take a minute, point of order, Mr. Garcia, to mute that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
If one of the council members could just speak real quick, I want to make sure.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good. Thank you very much. Moving on to Communications, Petitions, and Reports, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Council, oh, Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving forward after that with the docket, we have no ordinances. We have resolutions. Madam President, are there any items that the council would like to discuss at this time, or would you like me to read title by title?
Are there any questions by any council people for any resolutions that we would move from consent agenda? I would like 24-236 to be roll called, please.
Noted.
Also, I would like to make a statement about 24-234.
Will that remain on a consent agenda?
It will. I just want to make a statement about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just had a question. It doesn't have to...
Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
Yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
235, 236. Just, I just have one question on those. Not that it has to get pulled, but I just had a question on those.
235 and 236?
Six, yeah. I think so. No, 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 not 235, 236 and 237.
And 237.
236 and 237.
Mr. Clerk, if I may, for the ones that there's questions, I would suggest we just pull them and roll call them, even if it's just questions. I think that'll make it go a little smoother. It's all right with the council?
And excuse the 236. That's not already, so that's okay.
Okay.
It's really 218. I'm sorry, because I made a mistake. 218, those with workers' compensation. It's like three of those.
Okay, so...
218, I'm sorry.
Just 218?
Yeah, because once you answer 218, it'll answer the other ones that I have.
So roll call for 218, then?
Just a question.
She just has a question.
Just questions. Okay, understood.
So, excuse me one second, just a quick point of order. While I appreciate Mr. Micky O.'s suggestion, I want us to keep it going how we've been doing it so that there is no confusion. So we will ask the question, and then we'll yield back to consent if it is answered satisfactorily.
Madam President, what I'll do is after your questions are over, I'll go ahead and go back with you to review, just to make sure we have a consent agenda set.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council people with any other resolutions that you have questions on? Okay. Hearing none. We'll start with 24-235.
I think that's at the wrong number, Council President. It's just 218.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. 24-218.
So I guess for Scott, just a question, because I see there's three different, we have three different agencies representing, law firms that are representing us for workers' compensation?
Yes.
I was just curious as to, like, I thought we would just use one. Is there a reason? Or is it just because it's a different types of workers' compensation?
I think Director Bridges here, his answer would be, it's just good to have a roster of law firms, you know, at the ready to be able to help us with these matters.
Thank you.
Can it remain on consent?
Yes.
Thank you. So 218 will remain on consent agenda?
Madam President, just a humble reminder. It's my understanding you have two walk-on resolutions. Is that correct?
Yes, we have two walk-on resolutions before us that will be allowed due to the nature of the resolutions. If Director Richardson could come forward and just speak briefly as to the need for this, so that council can be apprised as to what they're for. Thank you.
And Madam President, would you like me to read those by title?
Yes.
Certainly. If you'd like, I'll read them by title prior to any questions. Thank you. First one is a resolution authorizing a contract with VMG Group, 288 Cox Street, Rose Hill, New Jersey, 07203, for roof replacement at the Trenton Health Center, 218 North Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08608, in conjunction with the County of Mercer Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Agreement, CK09 Mercer 2022-10, in an amount not to exceed $145,795.20 for a period of one year from the date of award. The second walk-on resolution, being walked on by the council president, will be resolution authorizing the appropriation of $500,000 from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for repair and improvements to the City of Trenton Health Center located at 218 North Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08608, of City of Trenton Parks for the Department of Health and Human Services. Go right ahead, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, basically, good evening, Council President. Thank you for walking these resolutions through. Well, I will speak first about the allocation, the appropriation of the $500,000 that will allow us to address certain emergency situations at the Health Department in 218 North Broad. Recently, because of the rain, we started to rain inside the building. And so right now, we are having mold issues and that sort of things, because a portion of the roof malfunctioned, a portion of the ceilings collapsed and damaged the HVAC system. We have a whole lot of different issues there. So that's why we presented this emergency resolution for appropriation from ARB.
Any council members have any questions? The resolution numbers. Mr. Garcia, do we have a resolution number? Because we walked in on or not yet?
No, I can go ahead and assign resolution numbers for each of those. And Madam President, if it was okay with you, I was going to ask you if we, it's my understanding that one of these has to be accepted before another, so I was just going to ask if we could do a roll call in order for those two items?
That's fine.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, or are we at that point?
No, we're done.
If that's the case, then I'll go ahead and read them in order.
Thank you.
And I'll assign numbers referencing the docket afterwards. The first resolution, I believe, that needs to be read is the resolution authorizing the appropriation of $500,000 from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for repair and improvements to the City of Trenton Health Center located at 218 North Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08608, of the City of Trenton Parks for the Department of Health and Human Services. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And the number two walk-on resolution going in order would be resolution authorizing a contract with VMG Group, 288 Cox Street, Rose Hill, New Jersey, 07203, for roof replacement at the Trenton Health Center, 218 North Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08608, in conjunction with the County of Mercer Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Agreement, CK09 Mercer 2022-10, in an amount not to exceed $145,795.20 for a period of one year from the date of award. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And so again, Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, you're going to assign numbers after.
I will assign numbers to those, because at this present time, if I look at the agenda, I know the numbers are not in sequential order, but I will assign numbers afterwards.
Thank you. And before we continue, I just have a statement or a question for Mr. Cruz, for BA Cruz, in reference to 24-236. No, not that one. I'm sorry, the one about the taxes. 24-234, the resolution authorizing the use of estimated tax levy for the purposes of the third quarter taxes. BA Cruz and I had a conversation about itemizing the tax bills moving forward so that our residents get the tax bills, that they know where the increase, or if there is a change, where it's coming from, if it's the municipality, if it's the county, if it's the library, if it's the school district. I say this because recently, our county executive said that there would be a minor tax increase in them fixing or righting the wrongs of things that had happened, as he's getting his administration in order. So there's going to be a minimal tax increase coming from the county side. I just want to make sure that our constituents are aware of where, again, any increases are coming from, so that they understand and are educated as to what's happening on their tax bill. So Mr. Cruz, BA Cruz, have you looked into that, or is that going to be forthcoming to have our tax bills itemized in that way?
Yes. Good evening, Council. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. The conversation has not been had with the tax collector because she was away at a conference.
Okay.
She is now back, but the conversation hasn't happened yet. However, we are going to do the best that we can to ensure that the residents are aware, as you mentioned, where the increases are coming from. I know in the past, the city has not increased taxes for three and a half years in a row. And, you know, I believe other entities, such as the library, the schools, I know the county at one point, I think we were blaming the county one year for an increase, but that was incorrect.
But it wasn't them.
Exactly. So we will find ways to advise our residents, you know, at the request of council.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think that that's important for them to know. Thank you, BA Cruz. We appreciate you. Okay. That being said, two, three, I'd like a motion to approve the following four consent agenda. Resolution 237, 24-237, 238, 313, 213, I'm sorry, 214, 215, 216, 217, 235, 218, 219, 220, 221, 222, 223, 224, 225, 226, 227, 228, 229, 230, 231, 232, 233, 234. Excuse me. May I have a motion to approve those for consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, that leaves us with a roll call resolution being... Was it 236? 24-236? And that would be the lone roll call resolution, correct?
Do we, will we have to roll call the two resolutions that we're walking on as well?
We've done roll call for those and a vote for those, so that the remaining resolution for roll call would be this 236, correct?
Very good. Thank you.
Understood. Okay, with that being the case, Madam President, if there's no discussion, would you like to ask for a motion to approve?
Is there any discussion regarding Resolution 24-236 by council?
Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a statement on this resolution. First and foremost, I want more than anything than to see businesses come to Trenton, open in Trenton, whether they're bred here or from the outside, because it helps our economy. It helps our residents. It helps our city. And I want more than to see them successful. So I say that to say, I cannot support this resolution. I believe that this business has shown public malice against other businesses in the city, has publicly attacked other businesses in the city. It's a part of ordinance that cannabis businesses are to support and residents in our community as a whole, and to sponsor things as they see fit as their contribution to our city. And this business has publicly attacked other businesses when they did not get their way. There was an event earlier this year that this business attempted to sponsor, and because that business had not responded to them yet, they went on a rampage on social media to try to shut down this event, to try to get people to not attend. And I felt like that was so unethical and very unprofessional and very uncalled for. And there was other businesses since then. There's been other people been attacked by the owner of this business, and I don't feel like this is what Trenton needs. We need professionalism. We need ethical businesses that understand community, that's not going to attack people, that's going to come here and do business and be a contributing member of our society and not a hindrance. No business deserves to be treated the way that this business treated them. So I just wanted to go on the record and say that, so when my vote comes, it will not be any question as to why. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council person? Okay, Mr. Garcia, let's go to the vote.
Certainly. Roll call. And just to recap, I apologize, the motion came from for this?
We didn't do it. Can I have a motion for 24-236? Thank you.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
No.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Noted as well. Councilman Harrison.
Abstain.
Once again, noted. And Council President Feliciano.
Abstain.
Motion failed. Moving on. Council President, we are, I believe, we have reached, and give me one moment here, to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance 24-043, an ordinance to revise certain positions, fixing the salary ranges therefore, and setting certain regulations for the implementation of same construction official. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Yes, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-44, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street naming of Kirkbride Avenue to Tray Lane Way.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The second came from Gonzalez, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Joyfully, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carried. Moving on, Madam President, I believe we are at, we have reached the end of the docket. If it is your wish, you may ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
For sure. All right, positive. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you.